Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor Police.
Here. I declare a quorum present. Please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
232, we're trying to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I need a motion to approve the city council minutes of September 3rd. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
Any questions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? I do have two written communiques, one from White Pine's Civic Association to the council. Members of White Pine Civic Association are exploring other options to get a new water system. We are currently exploring the idea to see if Wooddale would be interested in extending its boundaries across Route 83. Do we have any interest in this and discussing this, or we need direction?
It's worth the discussion.
It's worth the discussion, committee.
Okay, that's right. That's all we need to know. So, everybody on this side?
Yeah.
We're open? Okay, so we will bring that up. We'll figure out future meaning, maybe even after the strategic planning because we've got a lot of stuff. Shirley, you want to copy this one?
Yes.
Okay. The other one is a request from the Bensonville-Wooddale Food Pantry. They have sent us a letter basically asking for a donation. They have, I'll just read the letter real quick. "I'm reaching out to you, not as a past trustee of Bensonville, but as a volunteer for the Bensonville-Wooddale Food Pantry. I've been working with the food pantry and a fundraising project to replace their aging vehicles. I am excited to say that Roche Ford and Subaru have both stepped up to the plate to help us out in securing a reliable vehicle at a substantial savings that will serve the pantry well for many years to come. We have had great support and donations from local groups such as Fenton High School Student Council, Bensonville-Wooddale Rotary, Bensonville Senior Advisory, Bensonville Community Foundation, as well as the Village of Bensonville, and also given them the opportunity to raise money and music in the park." They've attached a letter to the city of Wooddale asking if we would contribute to the food pantry. I'm sorry. Does anybody wish to make any comment on that or discuss at a future time? Alderman Jacob.
Today, if anyone out there were requesting?
Uh, let's see here. No letter. I believe in that. No, it just says that we serve 350 to 400 households monthly, which include as many as 1,200 individuals, of which approximately 30 percent are children. Of the families that we serve, approximately 25 percent of them from the city of Wooddale. We see new families every week. Each month, they distribute approximately 20,000 pounds of food. Have we donated in the past? Sorrentino.
Yes.
Let's run them out. Fred, do you remember?
I'll make a motion for four that we donate money.
How much?
Five hundred.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Eugene, Peter. Any other questions on there? Okay. Well, normally when we get these type of donations, we, under Mayor's report, we've done them in the past, but Mary says we should hold off to the next, next meeting and put it on the agenda.
Just so that it's on the agenda, if you send a member of the poll or anyone to comment on it.
I'll give it to the manager then. All right. Alderman Wesley.
We normally don't give the check until the next meeting anyways. I mean, we'll be on the list of bills, I think.
Well, if it's going to be on the list of bills, it's just more appropriate to make sure that it's on the agenda as an approved payout, so that everybody sees that you're going to be making that donation.
That's fine.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Do we have the motioner and the seconder? Resend their motion till the coming?
They can. Send your motion.
I'll resend my motion then. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I have no other written communiques. Next, under Mayor's report, Aim, presentation chief, taking the lead.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could have Officer Ragula, Pike Cook, and Grant step up here, please. We're here again tonight, as we are every fall, to recognize our top officers that make the most DUI arrests every year. And we do it every year, not just to bring them up here to recognize them, but to highlight, not only you guys are aware of the dangers of drunk driving, but hopefully people see at home the, how importantly, how seriously we take it and how seriously we take those who drive through Wooddale drunk and take enforcement action against them, you know. I think, you know, 15 years, years ago, Charlie Woolley here, standing next to me, came into our lives, and it wasn't by any choice that she made or her family made. It was by the choice of someone, someone to drive out of the influence that caused her tragic situation. But I think it's also good for us to have her back here on an annual basis, to remind us and remind the officers of, you know, the choices they make every night to go out and aggressively pursue drunk drivers, that they are making a difference, not only in Wooddale, but in the surrounding people. You know, they might be stopping that person that's heading through town and preventing a tragedy from happening either in Wooddale or two towns away from here. So, you know, doing a DUI arrest is, it's not a 10-minute stop that they just walk away from and, you know, hopefully the person pays the fine and, you know, you're talking several hours of paperwork, multiple court appearances, you know, expert testimony that they have to give. And it's, it's not just a small task to make a DUI arrest. So, for those reasons, that's why we're here to recognize their numbers. After Charlie talks a little bit, I'll share with you the numbers that they were able to achieve last year and the department as a whole, but this time I'd like to turn it over to Charlie Woolley for some comments.
Thank you. Good evening. As many of you know, I've been here probably, I think, 14 years almost now, since 2001, presenting the awards to the top officers in Wooddale. Eric was killed on June 16th of 2000 at Wooddale and Thorndale Road. And if a tragedy like that was going to happen, this was the place for it to do, for it to happen. Wooddale went into full force that day, and they got the task force out, and they dotted their i's and they crossed their t's, and they made sure that the person that was driving a semi that was illegal, that was going 60 miles an hour in a 45 mile an hour zone, that went through a red light and hit Eric as he was going through the intersection. As many of you know, Eric's dad was at the intersection at the same time. It doesn't get any easier when you think about it, how to know that that was the last person that Eric saw was his father. The police officers here were very good to him. They kept everyone away from the scene, but they realized that he was somebody of importance when he said that he was his dad. And he got there before he passed away and was able to comfort him. Again, had they not been there and done their job and done the things they need to do, that man would have been out on the street. He is a repeat offender. The unfortunate part is, he was released this past March. He is back out on the streets. He is a repeat offender, so I wouldn't be surprised if we saw him back in the system again. But I have to thank the village, the police officers, and the people of this village for what they did for us. Our family is very grateful because he is one of the few that got put away. Again, it was DuPage County. Had it been Cook County, he probably would have been back out on the streets a lot sooner. But at the time, Joe Burkett was really tough on that, and he made sure that he had everything in line so that he would be prosecuted to the fullest extent. So, that's the reason I come here. And I have a little special tie with one of the members up there. My son and her granddaughter went to school together and were friends. So, it's pretty important to me to be here. I drive about two and a half hours to get here, but it's worth it to me, so I would like to thank you very much.
One of the interesting things is, you know, we hope public education, and I think there's a lot less tolerance for drunk driving than there was 20, 30 years ago. You know, the public education aspect, the penalty aspects, the driver interlock devices for first-time offenders on vehicles, all that's going to help. Hopefully, some technology is helping with, you know, Uber and some of the other stuff that's out there. So, we're just trying to get the message across, and, you know, I appreciate what these officers have done. You know, collectively as a department, we had 150 DUI arrests last year. These officers, there was actually four that we'll be recognizing for their, for their leadership in this area. One's not here. He's on special assignment, so it wouldn't be appropriate to have him on TV at this time, so. But Officer Adrian Ragula, last year, he had 26 DUI arrests. He's made 130 DUI arrests in his career. Alan Pike Cook had 23 arrests last year for DUI. He's almost at 200. He's totaled 192 DUI arrests in his career. And Evan Grant, he had 22 last year, and he's, he's at 66 DUIs for his career. So, anyways, just want to thank these gentlemen for their hard work and dedication. It's not an easy arrest to make. It takes a lot of quality police work, not just showing up and saying, yeah, this guy, this guy was drunk. So, they have a very good conviction rate on those cases. And so, to you guys, I just want to say congratulations, and here's some awards presented by the Alliance Against Intoxicated Motorists. Yeah, beginning. So, Adrian Ragula, congratulations. Thank you. Alan Pike Cook. Evan Grant. And I'll hold on to our three. Anyways, congratulations. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Good work. Nice job. Thank you, Pike Cook, for all you do. Okay, next, want to know, we have a request for an additional liquor license if we want to proceed and put this on the committee agenda next week. For a sweet baby raisin. It's in the packet. They have a catering license. This is for the restaurant. And it did not say exactly which license, so we'll make sure we know by next week.
It's probably a.
Well, it was V, but I heard they might, they might want the R, so we'll verify that.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. To bring it to committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That'll be on the committee. Mr. Murmice will take care of that. Next, I'd like to ask Katharina Iello over to the podium, and Randy Messina. I guess we're going to have a few pictures. This is from Wooddale Sister Cities. Katharina was an ambassador for Wooddale Sister Cities and was out there, and she'd like to present a couple of things to the city. Randy, did you want to say a few words as a president?
Here. So, I'm also standing present for Wooddale Sister Cities, and about, what, a month ago? Katharina, July, okay. Katharina had the opportunity to go out and visit our sister cities. For those of you that don't know, our sister city is Chafalou, Sicily. So, she was out there about a month ago, able to meet with some key folks. This relationship has just hit the, what, four-year mark? Four-year mark. I've been present for probably about nine months of that, and I think it's, it's hit a turning point. I think for us, her visit made us realize how important it was to keep this relationship going because we were kind of at a, what do we do? Do we move on or do we go? I think they showed a lot of interest. She'll go through her visit. We have some cool pics, and they actually sent her off with some cool gifts that we'll present tonight. So, I'm going to go play with the pictures, and then Katharina will talk to you guys about the herb journey. I will tell you, we are planning a visit next year. That's the plan, if it's affordable. So, I'll be coming to you guys with details. They would love to host us. I know their, their mayor and their dignitaries would love to have us, so I'll have details for you then, hopefully in a little while. So, all you, Katharina.
Okay, well, when I, I know some of the pictures that he's going to show, show basically some of the stuff that we brought from here. We had our flag that we gave as well. We also had a few gifts that the police department gave us. I also brought some Black Hawk souvenirs. So, you know, basically, you know, we kind of gave what we could from our, from our city. They were very appreciative. We, as you see, we have our Wooddale flag over there. We do have our flag here, their flag that they gave us, and they also gave us their symbol. Okay, so this is their symbol, basically, for the Comune de Chafalou, which is the city of Chafalou. So, we were planning on maybe having the flag here, which is the Sicilian flag along with this. So, this is what they gave us. They also gave us this very, I guess, book that really kind of outlines all the historic and all the interesting things that there is, the history that there is in Chafalou. Chafalou was actually nominated, what they call is patrimonio UNESCO, which is, their dome is one of a kind. There's a few different places that had that, and Chafalou was one of them. So, they were, they're actually anticipating a 25 percent increase of people coming in just to see because of this. So, it's a beautiful city. There's a lot of history, a lot of art. It's, it's wonderful. So, we have all these nice things that they gave us to display here in the city. They also gave us the Italian flag.
Katharina, do you want to talk about who that is and who you met with?
Yes, that is the mayor, Lampuncina is his last name, Mayor Lampuncina. And then I also met with the town assessor, Professor Vincenzo Garbo, who is actually in charge of, you know, the cultural, the education. You know, he was the guy that I actually met with that, you know, we kind of had more of the discussions of what, what we plan on doing and what they would like for us to do as well. They do want us to start this through the mayor, so I think that the nice thing that we could do is next year, if we could put this trip together, you know, this is a wonderful thing. So, I look forward to getting this to go, so, I mean, that's about it, you know. So, here is the Comune de Chafalou, basically.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to make, just want to thank Katharina for doing this. And regarding the trip, it will be open to all residents and any residents who want to join the committee. Where do you post the times, the meeting times?
On what's, on Wooddale Sister Cities.
WooddaleSisterCities.com. Mr. Murmice.
I was just going to say that Mayor's desk looked a lot cleaner than yours.
He had time to clean it off, though. Come on, I can do a better job. Yes, go ahead.
I also wanted to thank the city. So, I know you guys are really generous with your offerings, and they really appreciated it. So, thanks to everybody that donated some of that city stuff. They, again, they really liked it. Maybe not as much as the Black Hawk stuff, but they liked it nonetheless.
And I do have some things if you'd like to take a look at. Some are in English as well, so this book is very interesting. So, if anybody wants to take a look at it, it's all here.
And the idea is we're going to hopefully steal part of that display case somewhere and have some of these things there. Flag, hopefully, will host here. So, little by little, as we grow the relationship, we hope to just have more and more that we can kind of share in our cultural exchange. Awesome.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we'll put it, I'll give it to Jeff. Randy, is the application to join at the same website?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to need. We'll figure something out. We might even put it next to one of our flags. Or their flag. Oh, you don't like? Hi. Next. Next, the managers' report. Do you have the stuff on Thorndale?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three items. First item, this week, you may have noticed that the work over by the Wooddale Road interchange and the new 390 started. In fact, just today, I believe, the closure started that we had talked about where Wooddale Road went from two lanes in each direction for one, down to one lane in each direction for construction of that bridge interchange. That part of the construction is around $26 million for the tollway, and it will be one lane in each direction for quite some time now, probably until sometime in early 2017. Scott, am I right?
Fall of 2016.
Fall of 2016. The whole intersection, 17 through Wooddale Road. Okay. So, that started today. For residents who are interested in updates, there's wooddale.com/construction has daily updates on that project. Second item, just today, the treatment plant contract with Williams Brothers. Today was the due date. Obviously, the treatment plant's not done. There are still some items that need to be done. Staff will be withholding the appropriate amount in the liquidated damages, but tonight's really not the night to talk about it. Just making you aware of the fact that today was the last day. There's still a little bit of work to be done out there, and we can sort that out in an exec session once they're done with the work. I anticipate them being done in about another month or so. Not major items. It's just they're not completely done. So, that's, and I'll put all that information, what they're not done with, in the packet tomorrow, along with some other information. The, the last item I had, as you know, we've got our strategic planning session for November 14th. All of the forms and feedback have been submitted from the council. I will include that in your packets tomorrow. Just, just very basic level, just listing them all. They're not organized or anything like that, just so everybody can see the submittals. You'll get a couple more submittals leading up to the 14th. As part of the packet tomorrow, however, you also have an overview of the 123 strategic planning action items that you had submitted the past two years as part of our current plan. There was 123 action items for the past two fiscal years. Of those 123, only seven have yet to have been completed, so you're at a 98 percent completion level for your planning. Of the seven that haven't been completed, four, the council changed their mind on, so really it was only three major initiatives that weren't completed, and those three major initiatives will be major initiatives for the forthcoming year. They've already kind of started being worked on. So, again, good job on meeting some of those goals in your last plan. But there is more than 123 new items to work on that I got the submittals from you guys on, so that concludes my report.
Thank you. Alderman Wesley, you had something to say?
Yes. Jeff, is the railroad crossing on time for opening October 5th because?
Mr. Murmice.
Prospect is supposed to close October 5th, correct?
Mr. Murmice.
Yes. Metra and their genius planning originally actually scheduled both intersections to be closed at the same time. We explained to them that that was a bad idea, and they changed their mind and did not close Prospect at the same time as Wooddale Road. Wooddale Road, as of this morning, is still scheduled to reopen 9:00 a.m. on October 5th, and then Prospect would go down shortly after their, after that, that day. So, we're still on schedule as of this morning to open back up on the 5th.
At 9:00 a.m.?
9:00 a.m. opening.
And Prospect is going to be.
I don't have an exact time Prospect closes, but I would hope that it would be after Wooddale opens.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next, we have, if no objections, we have six items on the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? And we had no, okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Canolano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That's it.
And that passes. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, an ordinance authorizing a variation to the city of Wooddale's lot coverage requirements for the installation of a deck located at 268 Carol Lane, Wooddale, Illinois. An ordnance, item number two, an ordinance authorizing a variation to the city of Wooddale's lot coverage requirements for the installation of a deck and above-ground pool located at 206 Welter Drive, Wooddale, Illinois. Item number three, an ordinance authorizing a variation to the city of Wooddale's lot coverage requirements for the addition to an existing deck and expansion of the driveway located at 298 Carol Lane, Wooddale, Illinois. Item number four, resolution seeking to approve a contract between the city of Wooddale and Robinson Engineering for construction management of the hemlock sidewalk project and not to exceed amount of $23,500. Item number five, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the city of Wooddale and BWCSI for the water skata system improvements and a not to exceed amount of $26,460. Item number six, approval of final pay request to Schroeder Asphalt for the Royal Oaks project, not, in an amount not to exceed $35,584.93. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Tony, a second. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Canolano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning.
I have one, Mayor.
Go ahead.
A resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the city of Wooddale and the Illinois Department of Transportation for the clock tower project located at Wooddale Road and Irving Park Road in an amount not to exceed $225,000. That is my motion.
Second. Motion and a second?
Who's got the second?
Mike.
Randy?
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Sonny?
No, Mike did. Mike was first. Mr. Murmice, do you have a question?
Sure. Some of the, the key questions that'll be asked are, are we automatically committed now to spending this money? The answer is no. When we receive the bid for the project as we move further along, it's the same type deal it was with the safety improvements. We could back out up until the time we accept the bid. Second question, that estimated cost for the tower of $650,000, as we talked about, a committee will have multiple bid packages. So, you could have lower costs than $650,000. You could have a higher cost. That won't be determined until the bid. You'll notice that we did factor in the engineering, the construction engineering as part of this as well. And as we progress on with the Euler plan, I did receive the 80 percent plans today, actually, so we can submit that to you, and we have it in time for the Shape of Wooddale. So, I got that today.
So I got that today. And then there'll probably be another additional cost with H.R. Green to help us sync the Euler plans with the way things work with IDOT, so that'll probably be coming to a future committee. Not a huge contract, but there is work to be done to sync it to apply for the grant, so that'll be forthcoming in the future. That's it.
Thank you. Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead.
Isn't that, isn't it in Euler's contract to co-sink with the tollway?
Mr. Murmish.
During Euler's original contract, there was no, at that time, we did not have the grant from IDOT, so it was not accounted for.
So it's not in their contract?
No.
Anywhere?
No.
Any other questions?
I...
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So, and I understand the 225, is that's for what we would have if it got down to that?
Mr. Murmish.
Because how come the total dollar amount ain't in here, what, the grant?
It is as the attachment. The agreement with IDOT is attached to the resolution and that breaks down the cost. The 225 right now is the city's maximum exposure.
Okay. That's fine.
Again, that number could be lower. If it's any higher, you would have to pass another resolution.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
No.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. That concludes your report. Alderman Catalano?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Wesley. Public Works, Alderman Woods.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a whole bunch. Six. One, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and State Auburn Nursery for the 2015 fall replanting program in a lot, in an amount not to exceed $31,270. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Roco.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Next, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and Baxter and Woodman for Ward Three Road and Water Main Project Design and Construction Management in a not to exceed amount of $177,675. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Did we receive a letter from ITASKA yet?
Mr. Murmish.
We have a memorandum of understanding with ITASKA, but we can't have an IGA until it goes out the bid and we get an exact cost. So they're sharing 6% of the cost, I believe, in the MOU, but that IGA won't come till way down the road.
Go ahead.
Are they sharing the costs of engineering and design of this?
Mr. Murmish.
No.
And why is that?
Mr. Murmish.
Because I understand it's our street, but the design that we're going to do is part of ITASKA too, so I'm just...
Mr. York.
Yeah, what we ask them to do is just assist us in the road portion of it, since the design and engineering of it, of the water main, which isn't part of theirs, is all one lump sum, so it's just, we can't break out what the design of the road is versus what the design of the curb is versus what the design of the water main is. So, since that was all one lump sum price, then the only portion we could break out is the roadway portion of it.
So, may I do one follow-up?
Go ahead, follow-up, yes.
So the follow-up question I have to you before we award the contract to whoever it may be, are we gonna have agreement with ITASKA in writing that they're going to pay their part? Again, we've gone this route before that we paid for part of the project that we did not get a commitment to and we ended up eating the whole, that portion.
Ms. Dixon?
I do not think the city council should pay for someone else's portion.
Well, I will assume that as we're working on this project, we're talking to the municipality and as we get closer and we're gonna start incurring costs, that we'll definitely have an agreement in place. But I believe Mr. Yarkis said that we can't get the agreement until we have, or maybe it was Jeff, I'm sorry, until we get final numbers. And as soon as we get final numbers, we'll be working with them to make sure that there's a proper payment allocation.
All right. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Do we even know if it's in their budget to do this street?
Mr. Murmish.
They indicated that they would budget for the street, but I mean, if it comes in 300% over budget, maybe they'll tell us to go scratch. I don't know.
You have a follow-up? No, I'm talking to Alderman Roy Wesley.
Okay, so we're gonna go further with this, not knowing that it's in their budget yet?
Mr. Murmish.
Again, the, this project is a massive project and we have to do the project regardless. We've got $800,000 in grant money. They've indicated through an MOU that they'd be willing to share in the costs. They're not gonna go any farther until we get the bid, so...
Okay. All right.
Do we have any other questions? Roco.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
That passes.
Next is a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and Strata Construction for the sidewalk and replacement project in a not to exceed amount of $50,000. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
How many sidewalks is that? I mean, do we have any idea? 50,000? I thought that's, that seems a little low.
Mr. York.
It's squares of sidewalks and not lengths of sidewalks. I believe there was something in the packet last week, I believe it's 700 and some squares for...
I believe, right. And some driveways, if I remember right.
Some driveways.
Pieces. I thought I saw it in the...
There may be, there may be some, if they damaged driveway portions, they would have to, they would have to eat the cost on those, but...
Right, it was in there.
All right. It does seem, I'll follow them what we've been paying for the sidewalk replacement.
This is, this is not going down a whole street and replacing the whole sidewalk. It's going down and saying, okay, we need two squares there, pull it out, replace it. Three squares over here, pull it out, replace it.
Well, I think last year was a little more higher and it does seem a little low. That's fine.
This is, this is probably the most that we've spent in years on actual sidewalk.
And if you look at the bids, I think they went up to almost $90,000, I think. I was looking for it here.
Okay, next.
Any other questions? Roco.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Next is a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and Nature's Tree, Inc., doing business as Autumn Save a Tree for the Parkway Tree Pruning Program and not to exceed amount of $37,610. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Roy Wesley.
Again, ones is we're gonna start and finish?
Mr. York.
Will it be completed before April 30th? We have not been able to schedule anything with them due to the up near status of the contract, so we haven't been able to schedule anything with them yet.
Is...
Go ahead, follow-up.
Yes. In this contract, is there somewhere in here if they're not finished?
Mr. York.
The contract, I believe, states that it needs to be done before April 30th of 2015. I do not believe that there's liquidated damages or anything like that. It's just that they don't get paid for the trees that they do not trim.
You have a follow-up?
What, that they don't trim?
If they do not trim a tree, they don't get paid for it. So we have the number of trees that they have and the cost per tree, so that will be analyzed to make sure that they trim every tree at the right cost and then we pay them per se.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question to attorney them. Is it out, is it out of line, is it out of line to put damages if they don't finish in a timely fashion in a contract?
Well, you can do that, but in this case, you're protected, you're only gonna be paying for those trees that are trimmed, that are actually pruned. If you want to put in some kind of a drop dead date, so long as you have some allowances for weather, you can put in that, although if it wasn't in on the bid, I'd have to evaluate that.
I understand that...
They have the date on the bid though. April 30th, said, Mr. York?
Yeah, I believe the drop dead date is April 30th of 2015, or 16. All project needs to be completed.
Do you have a follow-up?
I'm talking for future things to put in the contract, because if they don't finish, then, fine, we don't pay them, but we have to go out and find someone else to do the work. That's gonna take staff time to do and everything else, so that should justify it.
Well, we can certainly look at this contract. You raised a good point that we should be having some penalty for their failure, any contractor's failure to complete a project.
This contract we can't do anything about, I understand that, but for future things, I would like to...
We'll keep that in mind and we'll work with staff on that.
Alderman Messina, you had a question?
Just wanted to confirm, so we're gonna start with Ward Four. We're gonna prune all those trees, right? And is that gonna be the case with the other wards? Will all the trees or just particular trees? I know you had a count for each ward.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. York.
The goal is to trim every tree. Now, with that being said, some of the smaller trees that are just planted are not gonna be pruned because it's not prudent, prudent, pardon, to trim them at this time. The other ones, but all, as we go through a ward, every tree that should be pruned will be pruned. We're not picking and choosing, we're not selecting only trees over X number of size. Every tree that should be pruned now, there's standards, like you don't wanna prune a tree after, in the first year of its growth, because you wanna make sure that it's healthy and it, you know, can be vital to take that cut of, I mean, you're cutting off part of it.
Right.
So you wanna make sure that it's healthy enough to seal that wound.
You have a follow-up?
No.
Any other questions? Alderman Catalano, I wasn't sure if you...
And of course, if there's a tree in any kind of ward that is, that is bad, that needs to be trimmed because of safety issues, we're gonna go out there and take care of that.
Mr. York.
Yes, emergency tree trimming will still take place, but hopefully this process will eliminate most of those calls over, after, after the cycle's been completed.
Right. Thank you. Alderman Messina, another question?
Yeah, you mentioned emergency tree trimming. Would we be subject to those costs that are in the packet or would that be done in-house?
Mr. York.
Most of the time it will be done in-house unless a tree is either too big for us to trim in-house or if it's tangled up into power lines or whatever, and we have other, we have other means to go about that, whether we use Autumn Save a Tree to do that or if we use one of the other contractors that we have relationships with.
Sorry. Do you have a follow-up or any other question? Roco.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Next, approval of a partial payment request, number 22, to the Williams Brother Construction Company for the North West Water Treatment Plant upgrades, Phase 1B, in an amount not to exceed $313,237.80. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Now that this came to light that they didn't finish and any of these bills on here, if it's on the punch list, not completed, do we have to pay them?
Mr. Murmish.
We can't charge liquidated damages for any other date that started today.
Okay, but what I'm...
Go ahead, follow-up.
But what I'm asking for legal opinion here, there's a bill here for $313,237.80. There's a punch list out there now. Are any of these items that are listed on the list of bills that we are approving tonight on a punch list, not completed, why will we pay if they aren't completed? I mean, we're paying for something that if it's on that list of bills, we shouldn't be paying for it.
Mr. Murmish.
I think Alderman Wesley's referring to if they install a door and then the door is scratched, do we still have to pay them for it before they fix the door?
Ms. Dixon.
My understanding is the amount that's set forth before you pay out tonight is work that's been completed. If there is something in error with the work that's been completed, we'll be taking that up with the contractor through our, any holdback we have for the liquidated damages, but the money's here is for work that has been done.
You have a follow-up?
No. I take it off.
Any other questions? Roco, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Next is a resolution seeking to approve an IGA between the Illinois Tollway Authority and the city of Wooddale for the Salt Creek Bridge and the Middle Bridge, Drive Bridge project as part of the EOWA project. That is my motion.
Second.
Which second came first?
Mike.
Any questions on this? Rocco.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That is the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and Administration?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under Other Business, the Wooddale Noise Group report?
Have a couple items on that one. Um, the Wooddale, uh, the July noise complaints was forty-two thousand, fourteen complaints from eighty-nine hundred complainants, um, which was up one hundred and seventy-three from the previous month. Uh, DuPage County also voted to give a five thousand dollar, uh, to SOC to be allocated to the cost of the expert SOC has been using. And our group will be working on creating a flyer for all residents that describes what's been done with the airport and just getting, letting everybody know what's happened and what's happening. That's the report on the Ohio Air Noise Group.
Thank you. Alderman Sizmarsky, got your hand up?
Yeah, that wasn't it, just on, uh, wasn't it just on the news today that one of the towns is suing Ohio Airport? Bensonville?
Residents, sir.
Doing something similar.
Residents.
Doesn't stop the vote.
Residents. Looked at all?
I believe that the?
Sixty-five residents.
Yeah, I haven't seen, um, a copy of litigation, but what I have been hearing is that it's, um, a consortium of residents who are suing.
Okay. Stormwater Commission, Alderman Jacob.
Okay, I have a few things that the Stormwater Commission wanted me to bring forward. Um, they were asking about, uh, the city's CRS recertification, uh, to improve from a Class Five to a Class Four. Uh, Mr. Phipps, uh, said that that would cost between a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars. So I just want to bring that up, that's, they're asking for that. Um, Store Management Committee, they want to know whether city staff all has received CERT training. I'm not sure who would have the answer to that.
CERT training, you said?
Um, that's what they said. They, uh, they said that they're supposed to all have CERT training. I have?
You're talking about our city staff? Chief, you want to address that?
Uh, city staff is what they were saying.
I, I'm sure they're referring to FEMA ICS Incident Command System Training. So, yeah, all the city staff, we go through one hundred, two hundred, uh, some, seven hundred. Uh, command staff goes through three hundred and four hundred, so, yeah, a lot of, all the ICS classes that we're required to undergo, police department, public works, city administration, and even some of the elected officials have all gone through.
Are you talking about NIMS?
Yeah, it's the incident command courses, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And one more thing.
Go ahead.
They made a motion for the city council to restart the Wooddale CERT program to determine what can be done for citizens needing assistance with sandbags. I have told the committee that CERT does not do sandbags, but they still wanted me to bring this up tonight.
Well, I think the chief was looking at possibly the high schools or some, at, at some point, I know we had a quick discussion, chief, I don't know.
Yeah, and what we've done in the past is we've used the Boy Scouts, um, and next week we have a community assistance council meeting with the high school, so that's going to be discussed if, if they want to implement a program. As far as any CERT members or our people that volunteer doing sandbags, the, the demographics and physical abilities of our CERT members are not going to lend themselves to hauling sandbags around. I'm just, that's just really not a possibility. I'd rather see community volunteers that are able-bodied to be able to do it. Uh, our people try very hard, but they're not the right ones to be hauling around sandbags, so, uh, our older volunteers.
Okay, and, uh, yeah, just finally, um, the next stormwater meeting's going to be held October fourteenth, so it doesn't conflict with the, uh, city of the?
Shape of Wooddale.
Yeah, Shape of Wooddale.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderman Wesley, you had something to add to the NIMS or something?
Could I ask you a question? Is, does the new rules with the state require that all elected officials still have to complete the NIMS one hard and two hard and?
Was there one and three one or?
Three?
One of four?
Is that still committed to it? Because if we don't, if, if it is, then we need to get some elected officials done, because that, that's got to do with grant money.
Chief.
We go through a NIMS rollup every year that, uh, the county has certified that everyone that we have to have, uh, gone through those classes, has gone through the classes. Uh, probably six, eight years ago, we expanded it to include, we, we did send all of council members through that training, but based on the roles and responsibilities in, in those types of things, they've said that it's not necessary that every elected official. Now, the mayor, he has a higher role in some of these incidents, and he's been through several of the classes that would need be, uh, there might be, we certainly wouldn't prohibit aldermen from going through it, but not a requirement for us to get a grant funding. We are completely in line for all of our, uh, grant funding from FEMA or the Illinois Emergency Management Agency. Uh, we just did a tabletop. Uh, we've done all our exercise that we need to, and then next year we're scheduled for a full-scale exercise, which will, uh, include, uh, basically a reenactment of a disaster. We have to do one of those every eight years. Uh, the last one, we participated with Bensonville, was seven years ago, so we are one hundred percent up to date on what we need to be doing for, for those grants.
But when did that, when did that change? Because, Mayor, at one time, we had to go through at the beginning.
I recall at least two.
Two we had to.
I think, one hundred was one of them, and I think it was either three or four hundred.
Three hard.
Was it the three hundred?
So when did that change?
Go ahead, chief.
That's correct.
You could look into it.
Yeah, I'll look into it further, but the guidance has changed from the initial where, uh, they were recommending at one point that all elected to go through, but that has changed, and the county has said we're, we're all in compliance with what we're supposed to be doing, so.
Alderman Woods.
Yeah, I got a, a question. This is to Alderman Jacobs, the Stormwater Committee. So did they make a motion? Or are we moving forward with increasing the CRS rating, or what's?
They were just asking about it. They wanted me to bring it up. I mean, that would be for future discussion, because I'm sure we wouldn't be talking about that tonight.
And do we need a motion from the, the Stormwater Committee to bring that?
Well, they can give direction. I mean, they took a form of motion, but right now we're a five, and I forget, very few communities in the, in the states are a five, and even fewer are fours. And, uh, in talking to Mr. Phipps, he told me there's a study, and it's, the study is ex- very extensive and, uh, expensive. I had the discussion with them. I said, well, what about some of the other things? Can we get some of those things going? And he said he would look into it and get back to us, but the main thing, main holdup, because we were already accumulating some points, was this study of, it's like a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, something like that. Do you have anything follow-up on that?
Nope, that was, I just wanted clarity if we were moving forward or if we're looking for something else to get it.
That'll be, I mean, we can talk about it in budget if somebody wants to push it.
Thank you.
All right. Next, approval of list of bills. We'll start with, uh, September seventeenth. Alderman Jacob.
I make a motion to approve the list of bills from September seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, for five hundred, two thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Yeah, Gene was the second. Yeah. Any questions on these? Rocco.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, list of bills to, Sep- October first.